All right, let's call this meeting of the Sturgis City Council to order tonight, Monday, November 17th, 6:30 on the nose. Our first item is our Pledge of Allegiance. Nick, would you lead us tonight?
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight Pastor Bill Myros is going to offer us a prayer.
Well, Father, we just give you thanks for this night, this opportunity that we can come together and discuss the business of the city of Sturgis, and we just ask now for your wisdom as we go through these decisions that your will be done in these things, and we pray for the prosperity and peace of this city. Amen.
Next is approval of the agenda. I believe we've got an edit to the agenda. Mr. Davis, do you kind of have some details on that?
Mayor, I was going to ask for the council to add item 8.5, which would be to cancel the public hearing for the Board of Adjustment to consider the variance request to the subdivision regulations made by Wade Cudmore. The council set that public hearing at the last city council meeting, and going back to that and reviewing that request against our code, usually it's the Board of Adjustment that considers variances, certainly with zoning issues it does, but it's actually the city council that considers requests to the subdivision ordinance, and so we are looking through the subdivision ordinance, looking at the criteria for variances. We still need to communicate with Mr. Cudmore about that, but we'll bring it back through to the appropriate channels, but for now, we aren't, it wouldn't be appropriate to have the Board of Adjustment hold that public hearing. So 8.5, the request would just be to cancel the public hearing that was previously set for the Board of Adjustment.
And that was set for December 1st, was it?
Correct.
Okay, anything else? Is anybody willing to motion the agenda with the 8.5?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
With the addition.
With the addition. Thank you, Jim. First by Jim, a second by Tony. To amend the agenda to add 8.5, relinquishing the Cudmore hearing, and all other items on the agenda being the same. Those in favor of the motion indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? All right, we have our, we have our agenda. Counselor Thompson, you have some announcements and praise for us?
I do. Thank you, Deb, for putting this together and get out your appointment book so you can add to these because we'll go through the early part of December. Coming up Wednesday, the Exit 32 Yard Waste to Drop Off will be closed for the season this Wednesday, November 19th. That's Exit 32. Friday, November 21st, History at High Noon at the Library, Jack Pine Gypsies, will be presented by Brett Wilsell. That's at the Public Library at noon on Friday. Also on Friday is the Sturgis Festival of Trees. Social starts at 5:30, auction at 6:30, admission is $10, and is that at the community center?
First Interstate.
Okay, First Interstate, and that starts at 5:30. And if you've not been there, that's an amazing experience, whether you plan to buy a tree or not. It's wonderful. Saturday, November 22nd, is the Youth Craft Market at the Sturgis Public Library, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. On Thursday, November 27th, is Sturgis Community Thanksgiving Dinner. That's 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. If you would like to make a contribution or to volunteer, call Janetta Lewis. And if you'd like a meal delivered, you get in touch with the Sturgis Chamber, no later than Monday. That's this coming Monday at 5:00 p.m. to submit your request if you'd like a Thanksgiving meal delivered. That's for Thanksgiving on the 27th. 27th and 28th, Sturgis City Offices and the Sturgis Public Library will be closed. Thursday, November 27th, Friday, November 28th, for Thanksgiving. Garbage generally collected on Thursday will be collected on Wednesday, and garbage generally picked up on Friday will be picked up on Monday, December 1st. Don't forget, Saturday, November 29th, is Small Business Saturday throughout Sturgis. That's a great program. And then Saturday also on November 29th, the Sturgis Community Tree Lighting from 6 until 7. That'll be at the Harley-Davidson Rally Point, and bring your kids with you at that time. We'll have the reading of The Night Before Christmas. That's on Saturday, November 29th. And then Friday, December 5th, the Sturgis Chamber's Annual Parade of Lights will take place, and that starts at 6:00 p.m., and that's on December 5th. Deb, thank you very much for putting that together. That's what I have. Mayor?
Thank you, Jim. Any other counselors have an announcement or praise that they would like to offer? How about members of the audience? Anybody have an announcement or praise? Well, I have one, and it's, oh, excuse me, Bonnie, I didn't see you.
I just want to say that the plaza is merry and bright, and while I'm not always anxious to see Christmas start this soon, it sure was smart to get it up and out there before it got chilly.
Nice. Well, I'll repeat that because we didn't get you to come to the mic, but Bonnie was pointing out how well the Rally Point Square was looking and the rest of the downtown area with the Christmas decorations up. I'm going to make a little bit of praise, but it's going to segue into non-agenda matters, and I guess I'd like to start with that. We just went through a kind of a tough power outage for us. It was a good learning experience because it was essentially in the city of Sturgis, the same area that would be part of the current power shut-off program, and so it gave us a chance, or will give us a chance, to learn from that experience a bit. The praise piece, I managed to be around at some of our departments when this happened, and it was really amazing to see all of our staff, everybody, you know, they couldn't do their normal job because the power's off, but they stayed busy and they were doing things, whether it was cleaning up or filing or, you know, wiping some windows down or doing something. I mean, everybody was taking advantage of, you know, the outage to get some things that they hadn't had a chance to do. So that's, that's, that's pretty good from our city team. Aaron, you know, can we touch maybe a little bit on how some of that power outage went within the community and what we're kind of thinking about trying to build on that?
Well, we did talk as a department head group today about doing kind of a hot wash and do an after-action review and kind of figure out the things that happened and are we prepared, kind of dust off our protocols and make sure that we're ready for an extended type of power outage. For example, particularly as we went into the evening, you know, particularly, I live up on the south side of town. It was completely dark and I was going home, and, you know, you have your traffic lights, but, you know, the traffic was, you know, pretty difficult and pretty dark in those particular areas. So there might be some things that we can do using our four-way stoplights that we have extras that we use during the rally that we could put out if we're going to have an extended stay along those streets to be able to help manage traffic as they're, you know, commuting through and around town. Some of it's looking at some of our resiliency of our systems. You know, we've already talked about the IT piece of it, you know, like when we went down, City Hall came up relatively quick, like downtown. However, our IT systems took a long time to get reestablished. Probably, you know, I wasn't able to get into our work study stuff that we were working on until the following day. Our emails kind of came up. We had an opportunity to learn with, we had a generator that wasn't necessarily operating in one of our departments, and so they did some troubleshoots on that, got it, as I understand, finally operational, but there's some things we need to fix on it. So in that regard, it provides a lot of opportunities to kind of identify those problems, see the things that we can do to mitigate it in the short term and identify those things long-term that maybe we have to have on a, on a list of things when we have the means available to take care of it. So here in the near future, we'll sit down again as the department heads and review all those things that were going on and kind of determine things that we can do way forward to be able to...
Aaron, that, you know, I think some of that discussion also led into, you know, following up with some of our partners. I mean, there was a question about our rail crossings and if the crossing signals would flash and different things like that. And, you know, I know, I hate to say this, but I think people sometimes get complacent at some of our crossings, you know, that are, they're used to those signals. And so I think this is, this is timing-wise, I mean, we're thankful that it happened while the weather was warm, primarily while it was daylight, and it's going to give us a chance to kind of work through this, what might be part of the power shut-off program and be ready for the next piece, I guess. Some of the reading that I did along the way was that, you know, they're fending off cyber attacks daily on our power grid, so it might not be necessarily the end of different outages. So I think we're going to come out stronger out of the experience. So we look forward to having some of the discussions on, on the outage that we had and how that can, how we can build on it. We're used to those during winter storms when it's maybe not quite the same level as, you know, people ripping around at night with their normal, you know, at a time that we're not slowing down anyway. A second item, and I guess it's just more, to start with, more of a statement. You know, the State of the City address that was, that I provided back in May, I believe, you know, we talked about maintaining transparency and staying, moving forward, and one of the biggest items of that is management of our rally sponsorship, you know, instances in that that have not been necessarily in line with what legal representation tells us state law should be doing. And, you know, I think that the level of concurrence on that is deep. It's not, it's not just in-house. It's, you know, been other places. We are going to be working forward in the, in the coming months to try and get that sorted out, to kind of bring that full circle. As our ordinance is written right now, we keep a whole lot of things private, under the guise that it's intellectual property, but, you know, how much you pay for something is not intellectual property. I mean, the secret recipe for Kentucky Fried Chicken is definitely IP, but we've got some, we've got some work to do. Eric, do you have any comments or input that you could provide, limitedly on this? We don't want to make this a 20-minute discussion tonight.
Well, I promise you I won't, but I guess just the brief overview would be more or less echoing what you said, Mayor, pursuant to your direction, the council's direction, and what I believe to be state law. We're evaluating the rally sponsorship program. In the past, those sponsorship agreements have been considered not available to the public. That is not the conclusion that I reach, even if it wasn't. The council, that is not the direction that they have indicated to me that they want to go. And so a huge portion of our existing past rally sponsorship program is built around that premise that is no longer there. And so that means that in some ways, the program needs to be reconstructed, and staff has been putting in a significant amount of time and effort to evaluate that, to review all the potential options so that we can bring options to the council for its consideration. So we're working that through the appropriate processes, and I do expect that we'll have some discussion points for the council within the next few months.
Thank you, Art. Well, I capitalized most of the, well, all of the non-agenda matters so far. Does anybody from council have anything that's not on the agenda they'd like to bring up tonight? How about members of the audience? Got an item that's not on the agenda that you'd like to, like to bring forward? Be brave. Did you raise your hand, sir? Okay, thank you. Well, continuing on then, that'll bring us to department updates. Item 6-1 is October 2025 Sales Tax Report. Administrator Jordan?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So looking at October, you know, we are up a couple percent from what we were last year, quite a bit up from what we were in 2023. And if you look at that, that chart there, the one down below, that shows you a six-year comparison. So even though we're not where we anticipated that we wanted to be for 2025, you know, historically, you know, we're still sitting as good as we've ever have been at this point through October of this year. So hope that trend continues. The last two months has been the highest sales tax receipts over the last three years and probably over the last 10, and hopefully we'll continue to have that trend into November, November and into December. If you look into the BBB, kind of look into the tourism tax, eating establishments and whatnot, it was down a little bit from last year, quite a bit up from back in October of 2023, and right now, just year-to-date, we're pretty close neck and neck where we were last year at this point. Depending on your questions.
Just more of an overall statement. It's looking like we're going to meet our means of finance as far as our sales tax numbers for this year. Isn't that your, your read on that, Aaron?
I think on the BBB, I'm a little concerned on the general sales tax. Ann and I were, was looking at, and you'll see that when we're looking at the revenues for 2025, we projected revenues of $2.6 million, just over 2.6, and we think we'll probably end up around 2.5.
Thank you. I mean, that, that's important for us because it is a substantial portion of our means of finance, and so maintaining that sales tax level is a plus for the community for sure. Is that it for sales tax, Aaron?
That's it.
Well, then let's, let's go to 6.2, the financial execution. And kind of point out, this is, I mean, we're trying to get this moved forward, refine our process, and provide this monthly. That's never been done, you know. So I hope not just the members of council, other members of the staff, and definitely, you know, our, our community members, the public are able to take this information and understand what their tax dollars are being used for and, you know, how, how they're being applied.
Tonight, I'm just going to do a short overview, but from this point forward, I'm hoping to have some charts, things to show the difference between month to month, year to year, and so what, so on. Okay, they're looking at the expenditures first. Everything is looking great in general fund. Nobody is over budget and shouldn't be by the end of the year. We should be sitting good there. The other point, the other thing that I want to bring up is the liquor. It's still, the numbers are still going to be a little off because of the Counterpoint. Tomorrow, I will be on the phone with our software, with Casell, and they will look at how they have that set up, how we're paying the bills, and where it's getting coded to. And hopefully that will be taken care of and be cleaned up. I'm hoping tomorrow, but if not, by the end of the month, they've got to have it fixed for us. And if it means they have to call Counterpoint, then that's fine, too.
Back in 2024, the city of Sturgis implemented a different process of when we purchased supplies for the liquor store, there was, it used to be a manual transaction that that come over and the finance office would input that stuff into Casell. Last year, we implemented where it's automated, and so you have that setup that happens at the liquor store for buying their product, and using Counterpoint as, I'm not sure what that system would be called, but then it gets transferred automatically over to Casell, and it looks like it's being a double charge. So if you spent $1,000 on something, what it's showing is that now we have $1,000 and another $1,000 charge in our Casell. And that seems to be somewhat consistent, you know, since 2024. We started to recognize this year, earlier this year, when we were doing the reconciliation. I think we probably found out, probably, you know, towards the middle of the year when we were finishing up our reconciliation for 2024, that we had this debt in the liquor store. And if you look at what we purchased, that means that we were either, you know, we were selling supplies for a lot less than what we purchased it for. And everything was accounted for from an inventory perspective, and so we started to get some indication that there had to have been an accounting error, but it was somewhat challenging to determine what that problem was. So it's over the last probably month that through Ann's work and Travis's work is working back with Counterpoint and looking at Casell, determined that there was these double charges. So now we have to work back, as Ann said, back with Casell to be able to fix that so we don't have that double charge. So if you look in 2024, we were like four, about 400, a couple hundred thousand maybe, short. This year, we're above it, but if you look at our liquor store for revenue in terms of what we purchased, it's a much greater than what we've actually, you know, because we have the other records that Travis maintains, they'd be able to balance that against. So that's, you know, we got to get that one fixed, and that will show, at least from the liquor store, that that is a profitable endeavor.
Okay. And then the third thing I want to bring to your attention, excuse me. Ambulance, we do know that right now that we'll have to do a supplement to their budget. We are about $700,000 short to meet the budget, for the budget, and with our revenues not coming in the way they should because of the billing. That is improving. That is looking great. It's going to be better next year, I'm sure. So that's what I've got for the expenditures. Does anybody have any questions on anything that you looked at?
Well, I'd like to just point out that we will be discussing this ambulance situation in more detail when we get, would get down to it, but at this point, it's looking like for the first part of the year, we were not billing, and the federal government doesn't pay bills that aren't put in within 30 days. And it's unfortunate, but we're going to continue to be working on it, but we'll have more discussion on that when we get to the hearings that we have on those pieces because it is, it's certainly disappointing that, you know, that's like putting your time card in, making sure that you get paid is getting, getting our bills put out. And, but of course, that's been corrected. We're collecting much higher rates. We're getting our, getting our billing put in almost immediately. I think, you know, post-rally, we, we ended up having all the rally bills put in, I think by Wednesday after the rally, if I recall what was discussed correctly, and, you know, that's, that's good. But we still have some holes from our past that we have to plug, which is the same sort of deal that unfortunately we keep working on, but, you know, eventually, we're going to get all these unknowns behind us and be moving forward at 100-plus miles an hour. How about that?
Yeah, and to fully develop that story, if you look at the ambulance operations for the last four years, we've probably been averaging about, you know, $400, $450,000 short every year. And again, I think what we've done with the third-party billing, you know, is going to make a big difference. When we, we've been tracking that for the last, you know, couple months, and if you go in and look at the revenue, you're seeing changes from June, July, and August, September, and whatnot, but you're not seeing any changes from before when we didn't capture the revenue that the mayor talked about, specifically, you know, like the VA. You have a certain amount of time to be able to put that bill in, and if you don't get it in, in that time, you don't get that, you don't get that refund. So the ambulance, in terms of being short, is, obviously, it's a big issue for us in 2025, but it's been an issue for us for, you know, quite some time.
So again, holding the primary discussion on that, when we, when we get an agenda topic on that specific item, but is there any questions about the financial reports that Ann has presented us?
Want to talk to revenue?
You want me to talk revenues?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. We have the second half of the property taxes coming in yet. They, they aren't showing on here. Next month, that will all show, and we'll know better where we're at there. And then we have, we're, sales tax, we've gotten through September.
First half.
First half, first half of September, and so we still have to the end of the year. And Aaron and I were looking at that, and we, if we are right in there with last year, we should have another $590,000. Is that what we decided somewhere in there?
Yeah, somewhere in that, 280,000 to 500,000.
I think it's important to note that, you know, we're providing these sales tax reports, but those are reports. We don't actually get the check for a little bit longer, so it takes a little bit for the, I mean, we're not going to put it into our accounting system until we have the money.
And those do come in ACH, so then it takes just a little bit more.
Yeah, like what I reported tonight was through October. The state of South Dakota provides us a push twice a year or twice a month on what we are expecting to get within that timeframe. Normally, it's the first, you know, 19, 20 days of the month, and then you get the remainder of that month. But if you look on your revenue chart here, it shows what $1.9 million received. That shows through the middle of September. It also includes a little bit from December because when you have that changeover from one year to the next, at some point, you know, that, there's about, that last half of December gets credited towards the following year. So again, on our revenues, that's through middle of September. It's on the chart that you're looking at right now.
Yeah, so just a little clarity on why we're reporting the reports that they provide us because they send them to us, and it makes good sense for us to get that out, but it won't show on our financial reports until we actually get the money. Yep. Anything else, Ann?
No, that's what I've got.
Bonnie, you had a question?
Bonnie Albert Sturgis, I really appreciate the degree to which we are talking about some of these things now. You know, I've been coming to council meetings for a long time, and I have no recollection that we've ever really talked about the cash flow of sales tax and some of those things. And so thank you for doing that because I think, I think citizen responsibility is a piece of our, our problem and our issue and the things that we're addressing in town. And so there are things that I've said before, and sometimes I just think they need to be said again. I want to ask a couple of questions. BBB, that's the one on hotels and...
Bed, booze, and I always forget the third B.
Boarding.
Boarding, not beer.
Okay, so, but I think, I think the more we as citizens understand where it comes from, how it comes, and what we do impacts that. That's important. So my question is, do VRBOs and Airbnbs, do they pay into the BBB?
They do not.
And this is probably just rhetorical, but I'm compelled to say, why not? I mean, they're, they're providing the same service that those formalized businesses are. Is that something that we need to be thinking more about addressing and as we're talking about ordinances and expectations? Again, citizen responsibility. Well, you can tell what era I'm from, but, you know, ask not what your city does for you, ask what you do for your city. If we as citizens are not putting in, we sure can't complain about what's not coming out. So that would be one question I would ask. Why are VRBOs and Airbnbs not participating in the BBB? The other thing is property taxes. If you're not getting your property taxes paid, don't be complaining about the potholes in your street, and I will be very open and honest. I'm not complaining about the potholes in my street because my taxes aren't paid yet. You know, we're all struggling with some things, but let's, let's be fair-minded and let's keep it in balance. We have to do our to the city and you as our council and what you're struggling with, with trying to take care of everything. My other question has to do, and I know some of these things I probably should be calling you guys during the week, but I don't know about you, but my weeks have just been flying by. Clear me up on sales tax on... Clear me up on sales tax on online ordering. I'm, I'm thinking I was told that, that online ordering now does wind up paying state sales tax, but do we as a city get a piece of that action? Do we get our piece of the purchases our citizens make online? Is there an allowance for that?
There's certainly an allowance that purchases made within the community online find some sales tax back to us. Now, there's some outliers in it. I think the online vendor has to have a sales presence that's large enough that generates that. I don't, I'm not sure if somebody can help me on that.
It's, yeah, for example, like Amazon has a physical presence, a physical presence. So if you purchase something on Amazon from City of Sturgis and it's, you know, it's, or and it's sent to the City of Sturgis, and the City of Sturgis reaps our portion of the sales tax. If it's a business that does not have a physical structure, they have to get, I think it's like a hundred thousand threshold, so they have to have sales of, of, of over a hundred thousand dollars before that would kick in. So if you're purchasing something from a low-density place that maybe doesn't do a lot of business in Sturgis, it's possible that that sales tax is not going to be provided to City of Sturgis, even though it's delivered. There's other avenues, you know, for example, we, our refrigerator went kaput here about a month ago, so we purchased a frid, a refrigerator down in Spearfish, but we had it delivered to our home in Sturgis. So if it's delivered to, to your home in Sturgis, that sales tax is captured by the City of Sturgis. If you're building a home and you buy a bunch of material down at, you know, one of the lumber places in Rapid City, but you have it delivered to City of Sturgis, that purchase of that material will go, that sales tax will go to the City of Sturgis.
But if I haul it home myself?
But if you haul.
Sturgis doesn't get a piece of the action.
That's correct.
Okay. And when you talk about the hundred thousand dollar threshold, is that in the universe of their business?
State of South Dakota.
In this area of our?
State of South Dakota.
Okay. Because again, I go to recycling and I'm just amazed at the labels and what I'm seeing on the boxes. I mean, the volume of cardboard is one thing, that's an expense to us. But I can't help but notice the labels and the things that we're buying, and these aren't boxes that things are coming from our stores and we take them out of the box when we get home and bring the box. These are things that, that we as a community, as individuals are ordering and buying online. And so to what degree are we cutting ourselves out of our piece of the sales tax and, and how that applies to the things that we want and like to see in town? So, you know, some of this is rhetorical. You can't draw a very straight line from dot to dot to dot and give blanket conclusions, but I'm just saying, as responsible citizens, we really need to work for more understanding about how the systems and the processes and the economy and the, and the flow of cash works. And then we need to plan and work accordingly that we're using our resources in a way that it recycles back into us. And I've been paying attention to things for a long time, but you know, in the last couple of years, I'm realizing a lot of things that I'm appalled that I didn't get some years ago. So I'm just trying to turn on light switches and wave flags and say, hey, look here and hey, look there, and think more about what we as individuals are doing and how can we be more responsible in our choices that helps this whole problem? And, and I always believed that if there's a problem, you're either part of the problem or you're part of the solution. And there is not ground in between that you say, hey, look at that problem over there. When is somebody going to do something about it? If I'm aware of the problem, I better be part of the solution, whether it's by my action or by my reporting or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. I guess to address your short-term rental question, that's an item that has brought up, been brought up in front of the council several times. Counselor Cop has multiple times brought that forward. And I believe that she's a member of our ordinance committee, they're going to be reviewing some of those pieces. So not more, not, not much discussion to have tonight, but.
Right.
That's a piece to have a, a talk with and to, to close that, the sales tax discussion. I hope we can say that, you know, malls were blamed for killing main streets and now Amazon's killing malls. So I guess, you know, consumer spending is always changing.
But we're making it possible as individuals.
Sometimes we're pushed into that though as well, you know, but.
My dating is showing, but because there's probably maybe three people in the room that will remember the book Megatrends that studied issues and, and the focus that they got by looking at the attention that they got in the media, in newspapers, magazines, whatever, and concluded that we as a civilization can only support attention to so many things at one time, and then they. Other things, but I just want to say, you know, they don't really drop off the list. They just go lower down on the list. And though we've had the sales tax conversation before and the, and the short-term rental conversation before, just because we're not dealing with it doesn't mean it went away. It's still there and we need to still be thinking about it. And not just you guys on that side of the bench. We need to be thinking about it on this side. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Any other questions or comments on the financial execution report? We kind of bridged into sales tax as well, but. All right, continuing on, item 63 is informational report about possible insurance provider changes. Thank you, Carrie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I wanted to bring it to your attention that we, the city, have set up an insurance committee that we are taking a look at different insurance plans and companies. We will be briefing the employees over the next three days. We do have meetings at 9:00 AM tomorrow, Wednesday at noon, and then Thursday at 2:00 PM. We originally asked for three different quotes from three different agencies, the South Dakota Pool, the Hub, which is our current agency, and the Teamsters. The Pool and the Hub were very similar, so we decided to stay with the Hub with the comparison of those two. The Teamsters came in with a really interesting deductible. What we're trying to do is obviously put more money back into employees' pockets and then give them the chance to choose the insurance agency and plans that they'd like to choose. Both the Teamsters and the Hub have pros and cons. We hope to have lively discussion with employees over the next three days to make a determination on which way we're going to go.
To kind of follow up on that a little bit, I mean, we're, we're hoping through competitive bidding process that we save some, some money for the, for the employees.
Yes.
And still maintain or enhance the, the benefit with, you know, again, with no additional cost. There's connected pieces that the council will need to ratify as far as contracts go on that sort of thing, so we'll be seeing this coming back, won't we?
Absolutely.
Well, it's possible. I mean, right now, we don't have a contract with Hub and we haven't received anything that, we're not sure if there's actually a contract, because we don't have one right now. But we're, we're still working through the mechanics of this and we just, I've talked about it a few times when we've had some reports that we had this committee comprised of city employees that were reviewing different options in terms of health insurance. And so this is just a follow-up, but it, a follow-up.
Right.
It's probably over, just probably the last maybe six weeks that we really started getting all the information, because they don't necessarily determine what their costs are going to be for the next year until you get into October. So Carrie's been kind of in overdrive over the last four weeks, just communicating back with all these different agencies and sitting down with the committee and reviewing all the information. And I think we're getting close. That's why we're doing the sit-down with all our, our teammates this week to kind of get a consensus where, where people are. Is this something that they want to do? Because it's, there's financially, that's, for a lot of people, it's going to put more money in their pocket, but it's not necessarily universal for everybody. There are some.
Agreed.
Negatives to the Teamsters one that for some unique people, based on what their health need requirements are, could have maybe a potential increase.
Right. One of the, one of the cons of the Teamsters plan is that they only have individual or family. They do not have a high deductible health plan, which a lot of our employees do have the high deductible health plan that which ensures that they also have the health savings account. That health savings account rolls over from year to year versus a flexible spending account, which must be used within the year. So for employees who already have the HDHP and the HSA, high deductible health plan and the health savings account, if we end up going with the Teamsters, they're not going to be able to maintain that. They're going to go to essentially a traditional plan. That is one of the concerns that, that several employees have brought to my attention. It's something that we're going to be discussing with the employees over the next three days just to make a determination on which way we want to go.
We'll come back to the council with a recommendation.
Absolutely. Pending your questions, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Item seven is mayor's report. Contained in that, we've got a, we've backfilled a position in the police department with a full-time police officer. We've had a couple custodians turn in their resignation because they were moving out of state. And so we're backfilling those and, you know, as always, we appreciate our volunteers that are helping us out with our animal shelter and, you know, we're adding some additional names on that so that they're covered under worker, workers' compensation while they're, while they're doing that important volunteerism for us. Any questions on the mayor's report? Okay, continuing on, item eight is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is considered as a whole. We've got item 8.1 through 8.5. 8.5 was added when we approved the agenda. Does anyone wish to have any one of those five items removed and considered separately? No counselors? How about members of the audience? Is there one of those five items on the consent agenda that they wish to have removed and considered separately? Hearing no removals, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda in its entirety, 8.1 through 8.5?
I'll second.
Got it first by Terry, a second by Nick to approve the consent agenda. Those in favor indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. All right, we've approved the consent agenda. Item nine is approval of claims. Any input on the claims?
I had a couple, oh. Had a couple things, they were just duplicates and I just wanted to clarify that. The wastewater, South Dakota Wastewater Association memberships, that's just for each employee?
Okay.
And then a duplicate ambulance, well, the, the amount was the same, but the. Let me pull that up here. Where's the ambulance? Procare emergency care medical equipment for 132345 and then medical equipment contract plan 132345, page 10.
Yep, those are all the Stryker sales corp. Was that the ones you're looking at?
Yes.
Aiden, you want to, are you here?
Sure, I don't have that in front of me right now, of course, but we had several outstanding bills with that company for continual annual maintenance and some purchases. And so there were identical purchases, but not at the same time. And we're just now kind of cleaning those up.
And these are tied to that federal grants.
Yeah.
Right. So we've, we've had these expenditures sitting on the books for quite some time and.
Yeah.
When Aiden came on board, what I had tasked him and to do is to kind of dig into that particular grant, understand what that grant was, did we receive the money? So we validated that we did receive the money, I think it was back in 2024. And so now we have some, we, I think we, right now, this is what we're going to pay for this year, we may have a few more. And then I think in 2026, we'll, you know, potentially either pay the remaining portion of that to Stryker or set up some kind of repayment plan back to them.
Yes, that's absolutely correct.
At zero interest.
Yep.
Aaron, Aiden, the one that's up on the board, he's asking about, there's two that are both 132345.
Yeah. It's, and I don't have the invoices with me, I apologize, I was unaware, but it, it is two separate charges. That's annual maintenance on each cot we have. And so we have five cots and every year, they come in and do some maintenance as we get, or preventive maintenance as we get ready to go into the rally to make sure all our cots and everything are ready to go.
Bottom line, this has been a dam of these, of these with this, and I, we've been holding off until we, until we got, did the analysis, understood what we were getting, what was this whole program was about, because when Aiden came in, we did not know about this particular grant. And so we had to do some homework to figure out all that information. And so I just gave them the release here within this last report, of this last couple weeks that, okay, let's, I think we got all the information, let's start paying this. So there's a dam of these sitting out there to get paid. But again, they're not duplicates, they may be the same number, but they're covering same services over different periods of time.
For several different pieces of equipment by the same company.
Sure.
If that makes sense.
Definitely disappointing that it's been over four and a half years on such, one of those invoices anyway that.
Yeah, some of them are several years old and, and it really, it, it took several months of data and research to try to find some of these and are they legitimate and did they get paid, were they covered by a grant, did we get the grant and some things like that. So we've, we've cleared up the mud a little bit and now we are ready to start paying some of these back and so.
Thank you.
Anytime.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Aiden. Yep.
Any, no, no other questions from council? How about members of the public? Any questions on the claims tonight?
Motion to approve.
I got it first by Alex, a second by Terry to approve the claims. Those in favor, the motion indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That has carried. Continuing on, on the agenda, we're down to, we have no public hearings. Our item 11, 11.1 is ordinance 2025-2, an ordinance granting MDU a franchised operate gas, a gas transmission and distribution system. This is our second reading of this. We did this for, the first reading, actually, I think it was two meetings ago, and we didn't get it on the agenda. This is the agreement that allows Montana Dakota Utilities to operate their natural gas system within our city limits of our ci, of our city.
The framework that state law grants municipalities is franchises to allow utility companies to operate within our rights of way. Those are, my recollection now, I don't have the report in front of me, is 20-year franchises. So our franchise with MDU is expiring and we're just renewing it. It's more or less repealing that section of the code and replacing it with updated language. This is second reading, there are no changes since first reading.
Thank you. Any questions from members of the council? Is there someone willing to motion this second reading of ordinance 2025-2?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Yeah, first by Alex, a second by Nick to approve the second reading of ordinance 2025-02. Those in favor indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Item 11-2 is discussion on possible zoning amendments to Title 18, Manufactured Home 1, MH1 Zoning District, to allow legally established non-conforming structures to be reconstructed or replaced.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. City staff has received multiple inquiries from property owners located in the Mobile Home 1 zoning who currently cannot rebuild their homes if they're damaged more than 50%. These structures are mostly stick-built homes constructed prior to 1984 when that zoning amendment was put into place and are considered. when that zoning amendment was put into place, and are considered legally established non-conforming structures. The current Title eighteen language prohibits full reconstruction of these properties, so what we're asking for tonight is for some direction from the council on how they would like staff to proceed with putting this together, what you would like us to consider, what would be the recommendation and the process for moving forward. If we do some sort of zoning amendment, it would have to go through and follow the state law, which would be public planning and zoning, public notice, first reading, second reading. What do you want us to evaluate and bring back to you? What is your direction to deal with this problem?
Rick, can you kind of quickly touch base on what led us to that? I mean, it wasn't necessarily just that some citizens brought it up, but they brought it up because...
Because of financing, there's some particular loans, loan programs, one being a VA, one the FH. Those particular loan programs would require that as part of their lending authority, that they want a letter from the city that would allow these non-conforming uses to be extended in the future if something were to happen. My understanding is that a traditional loan that you would normally get, that likely is not a requirement. That's what originally brought it forward to me.
So some connections from lenders with concerns on securing property that may not be able to be reconstructed under the current, current zoning that has there.
Correct.
Mayor, just in, in visiting with Rick about this, just zooming out a little bit from a zoning perspective, you know, there were, there were houses in this area before Sturgis passed any zoning at all, so as was indicated, these would be considered legal non-conforming. So at some point in nineteen eighty-four, the Sturgis City Council went in and said, these particular areas that we are going to zone, mobile home one and mobile home two, are appropriate for mobile and manufactured homes. And so this idea of not having allowed, not being allowed to build, to rebuild a legally non-conforming structure makes perfect sense from a zoning law standpoint of, if the council's legislative determination that one particular area or another is appropriate for one zoning district, then the idea behind that is a legal non-conforming use that is, for example, destroyed by the owner or destroyed by a natural event, shouldn't be rebuilt, because the council has identified that that's not an area appropriate for a stick-built home. It was when it was there, but the council's determined it's not anymore. And so just the idea of going in and saying, well, you can rebuild a legal non-conforming use, is probably not a great policy to, it would basically nullify your zoning ordinance. Then your zoning ordinance doesn't make much sense anymore, because there no longer is the idea that this is a particularly, you know, a specific mobile home area. So in my opinion, and again, we don't have a planning and zoning director on staff at the moment, Rick is filling in on an interim basis, but the idea should more be, from a policy standpoint, does it make sense, does the, the law that the city council passed in nineteen eighty-four still make sense? And so there is kind of a holistic analysis that needs to be done on this, that is specific to zoning, manufactured and mobile home zoning, and not just the right to rebuild, because that is a provision that exists throughout our code, and throughout the code of almost every municipality I think I can think of. That is an essential part of zoning ordinance, if that is the authority that the council wants to pursue. So I think my recommendation, if, if we want to consider a potential zoning ordinance to solve this problem, it should be more of a holistic look at, is it appropriate to have single-family homes in mobile home districts? And is, if it is, then maybe we pursue one amendment pathway to the zoning ordinance, but I don't think just allowing non-conforming uses to be built back in may be the best public, public policy to pursue. But as Rick said, any zoning ordinance amendment needs to go through the processes of, A, being evaluated by staff so that it can be reviewed, options can be evaluated so that they can be given to the Planning and Zoning Commission, reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, going through the public hearing processes of that, and then getting a potential zoning ordinance in front of the council for first reading, public hearing, and second reading. And so I think that's the question for the direction tonight, is, is this, is it the council's desire to leave the ordinance as it is, or is it the council's desire to consider a potential amendment? And if it's, if that's the council's desire, then we'll take it back on a staff level, work it up, produce a staff report, run it through the appropriate channels, and it will hit council again after it's gone through Planning and Zoning Commission, or it can come back here first before it goes to Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Eric. We've got quite a few members of the gallery here that are citizens of that area. Does anybody wish to make a comment? Please come up to the microphone, state your name, and provide us your input.
Yep, so my name is Don Lee Kivias, and I live at three oh five eighth street. I don't know if you get able to pull that up on the map or not. I'm kind of in a unique position right here. I purchased my home three and a half years ago with a conventional loan, so there was no issue. Because of taxes and insurance, it has driven my mortgage beyond what I can afford anymore. So taxes, obviously, I can't do anything about. The insurance, I was able to get revised, but I live in a section to where I have residential one right across the street from me. I own two lots in mobile H, mobile one. One has a shop on the upper lot, the other one has a stick-built home on the lower lot. And I had a buyer who was denied their loan because of this zoning. So I am in financial hardship right now in trying to deal with this. I've been speaking with Aaron about what we can do, yeah, right up here. So again, I've got residential all around me, but I'm mobile one, but I'm a stick-built home, and the property below me is a stick-built home, and the property behind them is a stick-built home, but all the rest of them are manufactured. So I don't know exactly what the council can do, other than the process that we were talking about, where it goes first hearing, second hearing. Obviously, it's going to get dragged out, so I need to do whatever I can in the meantime, but this definitely has to be changed, because right now, I think the city has appraised my home for two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, that's what I pay property taxes on, but if my house is destroyed, I can't put that back, so I don't understand that.
Makes, it makes sense, you know, a discussion of my own. My mother-in-law has property in that same area and would, would be affected as well. I think, I think she has seven lots, so, you know, myself, I'm in favor of taking a look at this, because we've got mixed-use properties there. We've got some very nice homes up in that area.
Exactly.
Is that all you have to say at this point?
What else can I do to help this process along? I don't know.
Well, I think you're doing it right now, at least for tonight.
Right.
Does somebody else want to, I mean, looks like we've got several people here that are...
I'll speak. My name's Vern Funnberger, and I bought a piece of property up here under a VA loan. Didn't have any issues whatsoever. It's a stick-built home, it's built in fifty-eight. The whole area, when I moved into that area, was a multi, multi-district area. It had mobile homes and houses in there. I don't have any issues with mobile homes being in there. You're talking about the, the city attorney here speaking about the zoning ordinances and whatnot? Just to give you some history of who I am, I was the mayor of Pine Haven. I served two terms as city council, and I was served one term as a mayor in the city of Pine, Pine Haven, Keigho Reservoir. I understand that's Wyoming, and we had different state laws that we followed in over there. It's very easy to change this, to go back to what it was before, is a multi-listing area with mobile homes and houses in there, because I don't want to, and I'm paying taxes on a piece of property that's three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. I'm paying taxes on that property, and if I go to sell that property, I better be able to get my money out of that property, because I've already spent money to buy that property. So, yeah, I think this is, this is a good start, that I think you guys need to rethink this whole situation, go back to what it was before. I dealt with attorneys, I dealt with the city attorneys, I was a mayor, I know the issue, I appreciate what you guys are doing. It's a tough job setting up there and speaking with the public and bringing up all these issues. I was a mayor, I was council for several years, so just to give you the background of my history of it, we, we can do this, we can make this work, so that nobody suffers hardship on finances or anything else. It's a matter of what you guys want to do. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vern.
You bet.
Hi, my name is Isaac John, I live at twelve fourteen Tenth Street. We were kind of the impotence to all of this. We moved here in August of twenty, and same thing, we were under conventional loans, so this never even crossed our radar, that this was a, this was an issue. My wife was born and raised in the area, we wanted to come back home. We, excuse me, we went under contract September fifth, after being on the market for about sixty-five days. Three days before closing, this issue arises with the lender, because our buyer had a VA loan, three days before closing. We had to wait in limbo until October twenty-first for our buyer to cancel, we went back and forth with the city. And during that time, you know, the market changed drastically. We're now back under contract at a loss close to thirty thousand dollars. What we're doing by not allowing, you know, certain loan types to purchase property here, we're allowing conventional only or a cash buyer, and so as you mentioned with the VA loan, we're closed sales, we're there for space, you know, we want to respect our veterans as something that we can offer to them, and they want to bring value to the community here. Our realtor gathered, I think we had it up for a moment, our realtor gathered fifteen, twenty signatures from homeowners in the area, that, again, they didn't know anything about this. So, I mean, the concern's kind of twofold here. Yes, if my house burns down, I have a three hundred thousand dollar loan, and I have to rebuild a manufactured home. I don't get any of that money back, I'm still paying my home loan, and then alternatively, yeah, I'm stuck, I can't sell unless I get the right buyer, and even then, if they know that you're stuck, you know, that's any real estate deal, they can low-ball you that way. So we've spent a lot of time on property tax tonight, too, which I think, like we said, taxes homes, and they bring in more revenue than a manufactured home would, which helps everybody, you know, including our underfunded Sewell District that operates off some property tax revenue. So this is my first meeting, I've been really encouraged to hear you all talk about moving Sturgis forward and helping the community, and I think that this is an opportunity that you guys could do that as well, so I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Isaac.
Hi, my name is Jackie Lord. I'm going to keep this short and sweet, because a lot of it's already been said by my wonderful neighbors, but I bought my house four years ago, moved up here to be closer to family from Georgia, and it is the last move. Trust me, after that move, I'm never going to do it again. My goal was to make sure that this was, you know, this is my investment for my daughter, this is my inheritance, and this is terrifying to me. If something happens to my house right now, I'm screwed. This is a single parent, this is terrifying. I apologize for my emotions. But life is hard enough alone, to not have to worry about something bureaucratic, zoning, when you think that things are put in place to safeguard your investments. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. We've got a couple other residents up there, should I call some of you out by name?
Oh, hi, my name's Larry Porterfield, I live at two one two-five Hill Street, just up in that area, it's a stick-built home. We bought the house, it was built in nineteen sixty-two, I believe, the house, and we moved in there about fourteen years ago, and since that time, we've put a lot of money into the home. We've, we built an additional garage, and we've recited it, and updated the electricity, put a lot of time and effort into that home, and now, you know, I, I don't know for sure if we could ever sell it, because of the zoning, and, so anyway, that's about all I had to say, but anyway, I, I hope we can work something out. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Kristy Schultz, I manage both a mobile home and a site-built house in the neighborhood, and I just did a quick drive-through and tried to get a count, and it's about fifty-two percent mobile homes, old single wides to newer double wides, and about forty-eight percent site-built, so if there would be a way just to add, just to amend the, the zoning to allow for both, like it would be a, is that like a mixed, a mixed use, just so that they're both covered in there, because it is nearly half and half?
Rick, do we have a, I don't have it in front of me, is there a zoning categorization that, that allows both? Or is it, currently, there's not?
I didn't hear him, sorry.
That there's not a, I was asking if there was a, a current zoning category that would allow both, but Rick says no.
Currently, neither of the mobile...
No, there's, there's, there's single family, you have single family, low density, but the, the manufactured home one and two is strictly for mobile homes and manufactured homes. There, we don't have a zoning now that allows for a mixed use. The only thing that we would have that would be somewhat close would be like the addition that Rod Bradley put in on the south end of town, but that was done as a PUD, which is different, that's a different mechanism to be able to, to do that in a single-family zoned area, but we don't have the, the mixed use right now.
I mean, I guess I would be hesitant to change all of the mobile home zoning, you know, beyond just this area? Would it make more sense to create a whole new zoning category, if that's what you want to call it?
Potentially, this is the kind of analysis that we would need to go through if the council wants to move forward with a potential amendment. There are lots of options, there are lots of considerations, there are lots of second and third order, order consequences that we're not immediately familiar with in this meeting, but those would be things that we would be evaluating on a staff level, bringing to the council as options of ways to solve this problem.
I'm curious as to, is there another side to this? I mean, we're seeing the problem, but has there, is there, if we were to do that tonight, what is the downside to that? Are we just talking about the inconvenience to the city, or it's just not what we do, or it seems like taking care of the citizens would be the best way to do it as quickly as we can?
Well, we don't, it's what the other side to the story would be, would be speculative until we have a potential ordinance to consider in a public hearing, so that would be one of the steps. In, in theory, could we have the council chambers filled with mobile, with manufactured home or mobile home residents who don't want to see new stick-built homes coming in and bought in reliance on a particular area being mobile homes in the future? I don't know, potentially, so those would be things for the council to hear about and to consider at a public hearing, if it wants to consider a zoning tax change.
Do I have one more thing for that guy? Again, Don Lee Kivias, three oh five eighth street.
You're going to have, you're going to have to, just have the mic in front of the...
Three and a half years ago, and it would have been nice that this would have been disclosed to me. Okay? Because right now, I'm in a position to where it's more difficult for me to try to sell my home. I told my realtor, I can't do that to someone else, I have to disclose this information. And luckily, Aaron was able to write me a letter that stated the fact that this is an issue, this is something that is going to be looked at, and there is an amount of time that it's going to take in order for it to happen. So that was to my benefit, but still, as a... So, that was to my benefit, but still, as a prospective home buyer, if I were to look at this letter, it doesn't really help me in securing to buy a home in this zoning area.
I can, think I can address that, Donley, and I, I mean, I apologize and, and I'm sympathetic to the situation, but unfortunately, the city administrator, myself as the mayor, I mean, we're not, we're not able to issue a letter that's against our ordinance.
Right.
So, if we are to correct this, you know, I hope council's paying attention that, uh, you know, it's their action that's going to have to generate this move on this. And it's going to, no matter how we cut it, it's gonna take a little bit of time because we have to go through the analysis phase that, uh, you know, Eric identified, we gotta go to a first reading, we have to have a second reading, we have to publish it in our legal newspaper, and then, and then we have to wait twenty days for it to go into effect. So, even if we fast-track the process, it's probably a ninety-day per, cycle.
So, are we looking at, at least trying to fast-track this?
Well, I think that'll be the discussion and the consideration that council will have here right directly.
Eric, um, you might have touched on this, and if I missed it, I apologize, but do we know what the intent was originally back in eighty-four when this was put into place?
I don't, we would put that together in a staff report, my understanding, and it may be incorrect at this point because there hasn't been a lot of review and analysis that's gone into this yet without council direction, but I think the first zoning ordinance was in nineteen eighty-four. I don't know if that's correct, but that is my understanding. And so, I think it would have been the policy decision of the council then of dividing the community up into these Euclidean zoning-type districts that determine what the particular land use would be. And so, I'm certainly, I, I think the argument is good that whatever policies were initiated in forty years ago may not be serving the citizens of Sturgis now, and that's an appropriate evaluation, but when you're looking at the zoning of the entire city, it does require, again, a more holistic analysis. And this, I mean, this is, the status quo has been the status quo in Sturgis for forty years. The creation of this new issue for the homeowners, which I'm also sympathetic to, is the addition of new banking and insurance regulations that are limiting, that is what is creating this problem. Our law's been the same for forty years.
Palmer, I think you had a comment that you wanted to make. And I, I, if I'm not mistaken, you lived in the same location in nineteen eighty-four.
I lived in the same place in seventy-one.
Yeah.
My name is Palmer Dahl, and I live at twenty-one oh-four Hill Street. We, uh, moved up there in seventy-one, in seventy-four, we built the house. Talking to what the, the attorney said, when we moved up there, everything across the creek, the channel, was mobile, was residential and mobile residential. Everything under the viaduct where we are was residential and mobile residential. And then in nineteen eighty-four, um, there was a group of people, Connie Rupel and them, they put in ten trailers on Cleveland Street. And we up there all assumed that we didn't have an issue with trailers because there were trailers there already, so we had no problem with them putting trailers in there, so we didn't object to the trailers going in there. But we did not know that they were making us, you know, this issue's coming up. And my understanding is now, um, if I wanted to build onto my house, put another room on it or something, I have the room, but I'm under, understanding that I cannot build on my house, I have to stay on the same footprint that's there now. And, you know, I bought property next to me so I could do something possibly, I'm not saying I will, but I could add onto my house and put a garage in so I could walk in at ground level and everything else. Um, so I bought that property so that I could do that. I own another house up there and several other pieces of property, so I'm well-invested in that area, and I've been up there for a long time, and I'm probably one of the last people that have lived up there since seventy-one. Most all of my neighbors, they all passed away. And I think it should go back to the way it was, residential, and you can call it medium-density or whatever, and mobile residential. And that's, that's the quick fix to this, I know it's gonna take a little time, but that's the right thing to do. If you guys want to do this in some other area, you do it where it starts, you don't do it in the middle of the road. If you're gonna have a, a, a mobile home area, you make it when they start it, you don't change it in the middle of it. I hope I'm not too forward, but I, I get a little excited, and you probably all know me. So, I, and I researched quite a few things on it, I went up to the, to the city and checked on a few things. I guess, like, a Janklow house is considered a stick home, I didn't know that. When I looked at all the houses up there, there were more houses than there are trailers. And I went around and counted them all, and I know which ones are which. Um, and there was several others that were, were modulars, there was one, my neighbor across the street, there's a church there, it was a church, then it was in it, I say a church, it was first a house, and then they moved the ch, the church into the upstairs and the downstairs, so it was, it was a residential area. And my neighbor, he had a trailer there, a modular or whatever, he built a, a new basement, put the trailer over on it, and everything else, and you allowed him to put on a, a closed porch, you know, enclosed porch and everything, and the way I read it, I'm not able to do that. So, I think you guys need to go back to the way it was, if you want to start this in a new area, that's fine. But I don't think you should, should have done that to us, and I think it was only done when they put those nine or ten trailers in there, and that's, that's when that changed, and whether it was just a, a writing error or whatever, but it was residential and mobile residential. So, that's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Thank you, Palmer. I'd be inclined to agree, I mean, my, you know, it's bad enough that you have these people that have bought in the last handful of years that didn't know. My real heartburn is these people that have had these houses way long ago, and then all of a sudden, somebody comes in and says, we're gonna change this on you, and your property's no longer used for what you're currently using it for. I'd like to see it, I'd like to see us create some sort of mixed-use zoning, or maybe we can call it both, I don't know what the easiest route.
I, I think that's what Eric was indicating, that that could happen with the staff report, possibly, but I'm interested, Palmer, and, and I've heard this before from those of you that called me, that there were, there was a, to be, and there is a, what it is today, so what, who made that change without letting, how do, how do the residents know that that changed? Um, if just moving mobile homes in there changed it, there had to have been some information, but...
Apparently, in nineteen eighty-four, for whatever reason, it was, I don't know, I guess I, I don't know, but... You bet, Vern.
Thank you, guys. Because it happened a long time ago, there was probably no public hearing to the change, so nobody got a public hearing on it. So, what your attorney is saying here now are current regulations and rules and laws, state laws. Another thing that drives the zoning ordinances and development of a community, okay? You have an area here that was in this community a long time, like I say, my house was built in, built nineteen fifty-eight. And I moved here from Pine Haven to be close to the VA, okay? To, to the hospital out here that I use all the time for medical purposes. But anyway, so that's what I think has happened in the past, and, and I, I'm hopeful to the conversation I'm hearing you guys say up there right now, that you will do the right thing, and I hope you will do the right thing. Because like I say, there's, there's a lot of people up there, invest a lot of money, and I don't have a problem with mobile homes being in there, don't have a problem with houses being in there. If you want to make it a multi-zoning district, then so be it. And do your ordinances and your three readings of your ordinances and everything that you need to do, and make it that way with your public hearings, which is something new. I don't think you're gonna have a problem with anybody up there saying, we don't want mobile homes in here, or we don't want houses in here, I think everybody is living there now, they're plum-fine with it. So, thank you. I'm, I, anyhow, I didn't, I didn't tell you I live on, uh, eleven thirty, eleven thirty-six, Eleventh Street. So, thanks, guys.
Thank you, Vern.
Certainly, a few different ways that this could be accomplished, and they all need to be looked at and analyzed for the best of our citizens. I hope that we all can push something forward to get staff working on a few different options.
Pat Baldwin, eighteen oh-nine Hill Street. I have two undeveloped lots that are large enough to build residentials on, and I actually had, uh, a contractor considering buying those lots to build some retirement, single-level slab homes with a garage on. And, uh, fortunately, I didn't get them sold, because had I sold them and then he found out he couldn't build them, I would be in a heck of a legal, uh, position. And in addition to that, on Tenth Street, there was a fire, oh, several years ago. And I think that house was more than fifty percent destroyed by the fire, and they were allowed to go ahead and, and rebuild it. But it was, the exterior walls were still standing, but they had to completely gut the interior and rebuild that. In nineteen ninety-two, I built a storage fed, uh, storage shed facility in that subdivision, and never a word was mentioned about my having to put mobile homes in there. So, that's just from my perspective, the concerns that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat, well, and, and your home is in that area as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah. What year was that built, by the way?
Eighty.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment that they'd like to make on this?
I'm Michael Kefler, I have a house there that is a rental. Of course, I wasn't aware of this zoning. I just reiterate what all these folks have said, and, uh, Pat's situation is what I was gonna bring up. If somebody gathers up one or two of these older trailer houses and wants to build a, a nice home in that area, and there are very nice homes in that area, it's a good neighborhood, it's a good place for people to live. And if we put restrictions on them, they, they can't do that, you know, they can't improve the area. I have nothing against the trailer houses, there's a good, a lot of people that that's what they can afford, that's what they need, and, um, I just want to put in my little public that I'm on board with these folks. I don't see a downfall of making this back to some kind of both. I know, um, there's areas in town that they've eliminated trailer homes, I don't think we want that up there. That's not what I would want to see. I think there's a place for both in this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else? All right, thank everyone for making those comments. Council, are you, uh, are you in a position to make a decision on this?
I would make a motion that we have staff look at an amendment or possibly a mixed zoning if possible.
Second that. We've got a first by Tony and a second by Jesse to pursue zoning amendment.
And if we could make sure that that's fast-tracked, I don't even know what that process was, would be, but if it's just a matter of meetings, we should schedule them.
Well, I think we've got some work to do, I guess, to, you know, we've got a lot of priorities. I mean, not trying to set this aside, but, uh, you know, our rally sponsorship deal, uh, you know, lots of, lots of pieces. I think it will be, uh, as fast as what we can get it done. But I'd be, I'd be disappointed if we tried to put a timeline on it because, you know, if we do try and rush it too much, do we get proper analysis on how many items? And I, I mean, again, I, I, I support the, the mixed use up there because, and I guess I'm, I didn't go up and count all the homes up there, but I didn't realize it was a fifty-fifty area. So, we have a motion and a second. You know, Jim, you, uh, you brought forward a, you know, an idea on timeline, I mean, I guess it would be a substitute motion if you were going to try and pursue that.
My point was just that, I think that if, you say we have, we do have lots of things, and all of them really relate to citizens, but, uh, we have a good example of, we can help citizens very much with that as quickly as we can make that happen. I, I'd like to see if there's any negatives, I haven't even, what if we do that, I can't imagine. I think, Palmer, you said there's, you don't think anybody would stand up and say no. But is it a precedent issue? I would think that would be something we have to be concerned with, but this is unique.
I, I agree, Jim, I, I mean, I think, I'm not sure, I, and I don't vote on this, so, I mean, I'll share my, my thought. Uh, you know, at one point, it was brought forward in, just in high-level discussion that, uh, you know, maybe by doing what, uh, Mr. Kefler had brought forward, you know, you have somebody come in and buy up multiple lower-income sites, if you will. But I think the market dictate, dictates that, I mean, we've got a former, a retired realtor and a current realtor in town here, I think they might be able to confirm that a site that, you know, has a mobile home on it has a value that places it high enough, I mean, if you're gonna try and buy three sites, and it's a nice neighborhood up there, but you're gonna have such an investment in it that you probably would be investing somewhere else because it's cheaper. You know, obviously, I don't know that for sure, um, and a professional would, would pink, bring that together, but I don't think it's a fear that we're going to have a lot of people trying to combine those, combine those lots, unless maybe they own them already. I mean, and of course, then it's private property, I mean, we should, we have fifty percent stick-built homes up there. You know, I keep, keep, you know, don't want to bring it up, I'd be conflicted if I, you know, by bringing this, if I actually got to vote on it, but you know, I, I keep picking on my mother-in-law's house, it was our hospital. I mean, that, that building is, that, that home has been there for, since the city. And, uh, you know, not being able to rebuild that home would be quite a problem, and even be tied to a footprint, I mean, a home that's a hundred years old might not have a footprint that you even want to consider under the, you know, your two-thousand standards and building techniques and materials and those sorts of things, so...
I, the, the church that was mentioned, I, I went to, to church there in the early sixties. So, that's...
I guess I agree totally, we need to, we need to get this right when we do it, instead of rush some, into something. You know, I'm very aware of things, back in two thousand four, two thousand five, I built a house up on the hill and it ended up being in a graveyard. So, um, that was, you know, I wish I'd have owned that before I bought the property and built a house and dug up bodies, but, yeah, we, we need to get it right and, and not rush. That's, I think we, we should do it right.
Are we ready to call the question?
Yes.
All right, we've had a, a first by Tony and a second by Jesse to work towards an amended ordinance and zoning for the, that area south of the, uh, the railroad tracks and access by Eighth Street. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for making comments and bringing this forward. Item eleven-point-three is second reading of our twenty-twenty-six budget ordinance. Item eleven point three is second reading of our twenty twenty-six budget ordinance. No changes. Aaron, from first reading to second?
Just a couple minor changes. Within the airport budget, we moved money from supplies and materials and moved it into the same budget into machinery and equipment. We have the automated weather observation station. We had projected what that was gonna cost, and we ended up getting some insights that it was gonna cost about five thousand dollars more. So, it didn't change the department budget. We just moved money within that department budget to be able to cover that expense. Also, within the attorney budget, there's some, the help, Eric, as our staff attorney, or city attorney, there's programs out there that allows him to do research and you make good decisions when it comes down to legal decisions. We projected that would be roughly about ten thousand dollars a year, and it ended up being about five thousand. So, I took that five thousand dollars. I moved some of it into the rally. There was three hundred, three thousand three hundred twenty-five that was in the rally department, but when we added it in there, it didn't get calculated on the bottom part of the budget. It was there from, uh, from the object, but it just didn't get added. So, I wanted to make sure that was included. We did add another one on the sponsorship, 'cause we, I did not put in the matching retirement for Mr. Shear. And then the rest of it, I put six hundred seventy-five dollars into the contingency fund that, within your guys' particular budget. So, I mean, we're talking about just small amounts and not much changes, and it didn't change the overall expenditure for the budget. We just moved it around a little bit to be able to cover down on those things.
Thank you, Aaron. We made a couple clarifications and adjustments. One of them, a formula issue with the budget spreadsheet. Additionally, I hope all the counselors and members of the public had a chance. The budget book is included in this second reading and added to the agenda. So, the budget book includes a lot of information about the budget, our organizational chart, and provides us a, a, a good snapshot of what spending will be in twenty twenty-six.
Last time, if this is an appropriate time to bring it up, last time I brought up the elimination of the marketing agency monthly retainer, or not funding that in twenty twenty-six, as well as the, um, there was another line for marketing further down. Got together with Aaron and Deb and Lance this week and talked about a solution for that, so that we didn't completely eliminate marketing budget for the rally, specifically for next year. And the why behind this is not because we need to market the rally. Everyone knows what the rally is. Everyone who's gonna come to the rally is gonna come to the rallies. We need to give them a why of what we're doing to keep them and get them to come within city limits and stay here longer. And we talked about a plan for that, and we'll be working further on a plan for that. But what we came upon up as a, as a solution doesn't take away money from one budget, just moves money that's already existing in the rally sponsorship budget, particularly, and I socialized this with Lance, of course, as well, and talked through it with him, 'cause it is his budget. And looking at the, what is four one, on page forty-five, four one nine nine, four two...
Forty-two twenty.
Forty-two twenty, yes.
Professional fees.
Under professional fees, it says rally events contract for thirty-five thousand. We talked about renaming that line, yes, because I don't like, or taking out the contract part, since it's not necessarily applicable.
Correct.
Part of that is going towards, has been identified as going towards funding for the, or sponsorship for the Sturgis Motorcycle Magazine, which has, which is, and I'll explain about this, I, the intent is not to take away from that, but for the first part, we'll be taking what we've identified as about between seven and nine thousand dollars to bring on a seasonal intern for Memorial Day through Labor Day. And that person would be working with Deb, with our social media, with website updates and things related specifically to the rally. Again, the intention with that is to give the why. People need to come and stay within city limits, and there's a whole strategy behind that that we will continue to work towards, and I will, of course, also work closely as appropriate. And so, that money would be coming from money that was going towards the Sturgis Motorcycle Magazine, but I also would like to propose that we, because we have surplus, we have in client, in-kind sponsor, uh, sorry, words, we have in-kind sponsorship in the form of motorcycles and things like that. I would encourage the, us to surplus those and have that go towards funding the, our, what we decide to fund for the Sturgis Motorcycle Magazine, because it is a reputable and impactful publication, so I don't wanna take away from that. So, that, by surplusing that, then we would use that as a means of finance for the Motorcycle Museum Magazine, and we'd do appropriations as needed. That's what I would recommend. So, again, the big picture, we're not taking money from another budget and moving it here. We're simply moving it within this existing budget from one line item to another, which I don't know if we need to specifically spell that out, but we would, we would do an RFP also for the intern and...
It stays in the same object, so it's, it's good. No change there.
Okay.
Good job, Ruth. A couple of comments?
Sure.
And I hope if we're, and to just bring it forward, you know, I'm, I'm aware of the intern and RFP. It was more of a marketing-based person that had, you know, was building that experience and, and would also be able to use it as a good resume builder, because obviously, you know, we're the biggest motorcycle rally in the world. But I would hope if they're around for the whole summer, they're not just doing rally. We're talking community tourism.
Sure.
Build the community, not just the rally. And also, just a general comment, I mean, we can take that on, but surplusing of items and allocation of funds, that comes from separate council action.
Yes.
So, we, so we wouldn't be able to consider that tonight.
I know. That was more of a comment as of how I would hope that we would approach that funding in the future. So, yes, thank you. And I think we have room and opportunity still, time to define, fully define what the responsibilities would be for that person that we bring on board. But I agree with you in having them work cross-functionally, not just with marketing and social media and things related to the rally specifically, but for the city of Sturgis in general, so.
Well, it looks like it's a, a good way to not have a huge expense and provide a benefit to somebody that is potentially, I mean, they're going into that curve field, and they, they've got good training that go, goes with that, so. Is there any other, other discussion on the second reading of the budget?
I still, I'm in, in, very clear about my motion to remove the rally charity contribution, not only for this year, but that we no longer do that. And I think that's a wrong way to proceed, especially when we're without, when money is short, but I don't think that's the way to do it. So, I would propose that we remove the twenty-five thousand dollars that has been proposed for rally charities.
Jim, in a structurally balanced budget, you know, assuming that, you know, you get a motion and a second on that, would we reallocate the twenty-five thousand dollars just to contingency? Are we putting it somewhere else in your mind?
In my mind, initially, as I've brought up many times, I think there's another way. I think that as a secondary issue, if there is that extra money, that should be done, as I've indicated, to pay back some of the surcharges that are on our water bill and, that goes out to the twenty-eight hundred different people, so that they can see that we have some, some benefit from, from, to the city residents from the rally. Now, I don't think, I don't, I think that would muddy this. I just think we need to not have, 'cause it's a second, that's a secondary thing. In, in reality, this is a year that we don't have a lot of money, so giving it away seems not sensible to me. And if you, if it, if it's just out of the budget, we can deal with the other at, at another time.
Okay.
Now, I'm not a, I'm not an accountant, so I don't know what, exactly what you would think. I just think that I have that, that's been on my mind since I ran for the council, so this is not a new thing to me. I think that it's wrong that the city of Sturgis takes tax money and gives it away. I think that we have other ways to do that. Now, if you need a proposal, I'll make that motion, but I'm bringing it up.
Well, we would consider that if there was a motion and a second, so are, is that where you're at?
Then I will make the motion that the twenty-five thousand dollars that has been allocated to give to Sturgis, to rally charities, be removed from the budget.
In contingency?
Yes.
Eric, Aaron, you look concerned. Let's, let's go ahead before we have discussion. Jim, that's your motion. The motion was to approve the second reading of the budget, but remove the twenty-five thousand dollars for Sturgis Rally Charities and place it in contingency.
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second, so we can talk about it.
So, we got a first by Jim, a second by Nick, to approve the second reading of the budget with some adjustment to rally charities and an increase in contingency. Aaron, it looked like you had something to say.
If we were gonna allocate that twenty-five thousand dollars, my recommendation was to maybe put some of that back into that professional fees up in the rally to be able to cover some things that Counselor Cobb was talking about, not to mention just to have some, some funds there to be able to, you know, just like last year, there were some emerging things, opportunities for us as we were going into the rally and other tourism events to be able to have those funds, 'cause we did kinda strip that budget down to bare bones. So, if we were to allocate maybe fifteen thousand to contingency, which in the Maryland Council budget, and ten thousand to professional fees in the rally department.
It would be, to me, it would be nice to see whatever doesn't go to the marketing goes into street repair. I know ten, fifteen grand or whatever isn't a lot, but at least it's something.
Well, in the contingency fund, council can direct it where they feel needed.
We probably should rename that department, 'cause it's not just rally. You know, there's already stuff on Music and Main, stuff that goes to the chamber to support a lot of other tourism-type activities. Again, it's not just the rally. It's other events.
Is that a substantive, whatever the word is, change, or no?
Say again?
No, okay.
All right. So, we've got a motion and a second to approve second reading with the removal of funding that was allocated for Sturgis Rally Charities, and at this point, place it in the contingency fund. Is there any other discussion?
I'm curious. Jim, do you have thoughts on, since you said would put together a proposal or whatever, on how the rally and charities would be funded, or how they would get?
I would remove rally charities out of the ordinances. I don't think it belongs in, we have a city to run, and there are lots of charities, and I don't know arbitrarily how they're used. I'm not making decisions on that necessarily. As I told you before, I'm a giver. I have no trouble giving, and I think that we had, I sit on the board for the, the senior citizens, and this morning, we found out that, I told them, I'm gonna bring that up, that that money that, I think three thousand is what they've asked. I said that, I'm gonna propose that we not give that to this board, and that the Meade County has already said they not, they're not gonna give any money. But we also got a, a citizen who came in and wanted to provide ten thousand dollars individually for the things that we do, so those things always happen. I don't think this, I, I just, it's not the place of the city to give to charity. I think it's the place to, to take care of the business of the police department and the roads and all the rest of that, and schools, and we're doing that.
Jim, I know where you're coming from. I understand, but like Bonnie said at the last meeting, you know, everybody asks, "What does the rally?" You know, and this is, this is a way that the city can give back. So, I, I'm, I'm gonna vote no, I'll tell you right now, because I, I think we should keep the twenty-five thousand for the rally and charities, so.
Bonnie and I met. Bill and I have had conversations about that. I understand how they feel. I don't feel that I'm being Scrooge over this at all. I think that...
Well, I respect what you're saying.
The citizens of Sturgis are the key, and I know that's a good excuse. I've heard it too many times. Well, this is the way we give to these people. Twenty-eight hundred different, uh, bills go out every month, and of those twenty-eight hundred, I'll bet there's not, they don't even know about what we've done with that. They may read our, what we've, it's a little like the ordinances we've been discussing, or the, the property, how it's been zoned. I know the, the idea that ignorance is no excuse, but on the other hand, I think that's been one of the problems that we've had in Sturgis, one of the, certainly that I had caused me to run, is I called City Hall, find out why things aren't the way they are, and no one could tell me. So, I thought, "Well, the best way to do that is for me to be here," and one of those things was, I sat at one of a meeting, and they talked about all the money that was gonna be given away after the rally, but nobody could tell me how much money was made or how much was spent on any, it's just we had this huge amount of money that was going to charity. And I'm a citizen, chances to give to things, and I do that. But I don't think, and I, Tony, I appreciate, it's real easy for people to give other people's money away. But I think that we have the, we have the right here. We're, we're looking at a budget that doesn't have much extra.
I understand that.
So, I made the proposal, and it was seconded. Thank you for the conversation.
Bonnie, you got a comment?
Of course.
I understand the frustration when you come in down the road and ask what and why, and no one in front of you has the answer. That doesn't mean there aren't answers, and I think what is woefully missing in this discussion is the history, and how did we get to that rally charities? I could address it a little bit, but it wouldn't be very accurate, so I don't wanna do that. I'm gonna bite my tongue on it, but there are people who know how and why. And as I have said before, I, I do think we want to do things where they are visible. But how many, how many water accounts do we have?
Twenty-eight hundred is what I was told.
Is twenty-eight hundred accurate? Well, then I was pretty good last time around. I, I got the calculator out this time, but last time, I said it was gonna be eight dollars and thirty-some cents, and it's actually eight dollars and ninety cents per account.
Per year?
Yeah.
Be about seventy...
Eight dollars and ninety cents.
Seventy-four cents a month.
Yeah, seventy-five cents a month.
Whatever it is.
Yeah. No, I, I'm just rounding. It's, I was a math major once, but it didn't last. That is not significant enough. That will not make an impact on my budget, and I'm one person eating up my budget. I don't think that's gonna touch a family to get seventy-five cents a month, or eight dollars and ninety-three cents in a year, to say, "Well, they're taking care of me. They're not throwing that away on charity." But in fact, when it goes to charity and it comes to my kid's team, or a shelter need or whatever, and again, I have not done my homework like I usually do. I have been a pretty busy camper this fall, so I haven't done my homework, and I will admit that right up front, but wherever that charity money goes, where it goes feels it, knows it, and remembers it, and I think that is significant and worth doing, and I think twenty-five thousand dollars in this budget is a drop in the bucket. And I don't think we should be ripping that out, erasing it, forgetting that rally charities ever existed, if we don't know the history of how and why and what. And I agree, we haven't necessarily gotten a lot of feedback at this table as to where that money goes and what becomes of it, but we should have. So, why don't we backtrack and find out where it went and what became of it? Why don't we get some fact in here about what impact it had and how that compares to eight dollars and ninety-three cents a year on your water bill, before we take a giant step like throwing that away?
A lifetime of communication means I failed with, at this point, the, the issue of whether it's eight dollars and ninety cents or seventy cents a month. The point is, every month, twenty-eight hundred people would receive a bill that said, "This has been reduced because of the Sturgis Motorcycle Rally."
By seventy-five cents.
At whatever, at whatever it is, somebody would be, would say, "We have found a way to, you put that money back towards citizens," and... that money back towards citizens and as opposed to travelers or whoever else. I understand, there's lots of, there is no end to people wanting money and most of it is good.
And I understand what you want to do and I support what you want to do and that impression you want to make. I just don't think this is going to make that impression on people.
Where would you put that, Bonnie? How would you let people, how would you let those 2,800 people know that the Sturgis Rally is working for them as opposed to, why do I have to get out of town? Why is, when I was in Ireland even, people would say, oh, do you go, when you live in Sturgis, South Dakota, do you leave for the rally? Well, no, I don't. I might be a rodeo person, but I enjoy meeting people. I go to the churches that have breakfast and I walk downtown and meet people. I look for them to meet, same as I did when I was riding the bus in Ireland. The idea, I'd meet somebody from Illinois and find, what brings you to Sturgis? I like to hear those stories. That's great, but that's not the typical person. Typical person is looking for a reason to leave town so they don't have a, no left turns.
Well, and see, I just can't go with you on that, Jim, because the typical person is the more than 50% of the people. I don't think that's accurate. Yes, we have people who simply don't like to be here during the rally. It's too much fuss. I've said before, I know I came home one time to take care of my house. I had it rented when I was working out of state and had to do it during the rally. And my poor mom had to circle the block, drop me off at the hardware store and circle until I got my nuts and bolts and came back out. I don't think it's that hard anymore. Yes, we have people who are again, we will always have people who are again. I have my own dislikes about the rally as well. I just don't think pulling this piece of money out of this, erasing this account, this intention to try to do some good is the right move at this time. I think who likes the rally and who doesn't? Who wants to leave town and who doesn't? What you do when the rally is here and what you don't? It's not a factor. I just think this is the wrong move.
Can I say?
And when I look at that amount of money, it's not going to make an impact.
I'm on the rally charities. We haven't had a meeting yet, but I'm going to ask for one. But is there some areas that I think we could clean up in that area? Yes, there is. Do I think it's done some good? Yes, I do. I see the women's shelter. I see the dental bus show up for kids that cannot, the parents cannot get them to the dentist. So as a citizen, I feel like, wow, the city is giving back some. Some of these kids are getting their teeth worked on because, you know, they're in a situation at home that just don't allow for them to go to the dentist. So, and the women down at the women's shelter do not ask to be there. There is a situation that happened to them and if the charities can help in them two areas, I think it's wonderful that we can do that. So I, we, I was probably on the council when, clear back when we started the rally charities and so for me to just erase it, I don't agree with that. And I will work on, I promise, I will work on some of the areas that I thought was getting money that, do we need to send it to Whitewood? Do we need to send it to other communities? You know, and I know some of that had to do with library stuff, but I think we can pull the reins in on what we want to give to, so that's what I get.
We can also work on visibility of, to what has been done with it. And Terry, the very fact, I mean, you guys know how much I look at things and notice things, but I sit here and I can't tell you, I didn't know the dental bus came out of rally charities. I didn't know if you do or don't give to the shelter. I just assumed because it's a pretty obvious one. We don't do a good enough job of waving the flag and communicating what good was done. And I don't think you can do anything but wiggle the flag a little bit on 75 cents a month.
Well, for clarification, thank you, Bonnie. Hopefully you're, got your point across. We're not considering where any savings, if it was approved, would be going, that separate action. The move tonight is second reading of the budget ordinance. Is there any other discussion? I'm going to call the question, we're going to do a roll call vote. Anybody else? I want to give everybody a chance to talk about this.
I would just say, sorry, real quick, I'm indifferent personally, whether it stays or doesn't, but, and this would go, for me, any money that we give outside of our organization, it needs to be spent within our city limits, period. Yeah, that's it. We don't need to be funding anything anywhere else but Sturgis.
All right, so with that, I'm going to call the question and a roll call vote. And Nick, guess what? I'm going to start over with you.
Yes. What are you, what are we, are we voting on my?
Voting on your motion, and I'll restate that. We had a first by Jim, a second by Nick to approve the 2026 second reading of the budget with the removal of the $25,000 that was allocated for rally charities and place those funds in contingency.
Yes.
Nick is yes. Jim?
Yes.
Terry?
No.
Alex?
No.
Tony?
No.
Jesse?
No.
Ruth? Okay, that motion has failed. Circling back to our second reading of the 2026 budget is, do we have a motion separate from the one that just failed?
Have the items that Ruth had talked about, have those been corrected already?
They've been corrected, yes.
I would motion approve the 2026 budget, as is.
We got a first by Alex, a second by Terry to approve the 2026 budget. Is there any additional discussion? Any discussion from the, from the audience? Hearing nothing, I'm going to roll call that. I'm going to start on the other side. Ruth?
Yes.
Jesse?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Jim?
I'll abstain.
Nick?
Yes.
That, that motion has carried six to one abstention. Does that mean, am I communicating that correctly?
Six to-
Six to one?
Six to zero.
Six to zero. Okay.
Means I'm not against it.
All right, well, that brings us to the end of our agenda. We do have a need for executive session. We've got one contractual item that needs to be covered.
So we'll go in, the motion would be to go into executive session to discuss contract negotiation with legal counsel pursuant to STCL 1-25-2 sub 4.
That is correct. Do we have a motion to follow that? Motion. Nick made the first, seconded by Alex to go into executive session, prudent to SDL 25-2, paragraph- We all here? Yeah, we are. Is there a motion to return to normal session?
Motion to return.
I'll second.
She got it.
All right, we got a first by Alex, and a second by Ruth, to return to regular session, not normal session. Regular session. Those in favor indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Bring, this is to the end of our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Who got, who got the second and third there?
Nick did.
All right, first by Tony, second by Nick, to adjourn. Those in favor indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. We'll see you December 1st.